Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good afternoon. I called order the informational meeting of the City Council. It's February 23rd, 2021. Welcome to those watching online, on television, or here in person. In lieu of a roll call vote, I'm just going to, or a roll call of the City Council, I'm just going to recognize that Counsel Breckie is on the line, and everyone else is present. So with that, we're going to move on to Counselor remarks. Anyone with Counselor remarks today? Hearing none. We have one presentation today. That's a COVID-19 update presented by Jill Franken, our Director of Public Health. Welcome.
Hello. You guys really cleared your calendars, so I can talk and talk and talk. Is that right? Well, I really appreciate being here this afternoon to give you an update on a sober note. It's actually been a year since Sandy France came and gave the first COVID brief to you a year ago. And so it's really sobering to think of where we've come in an entire year, especially when we know that we unfortunately recognize 500,000 deaths in our country due to COVID over this past time period. And 406 of those actually are people that live in our community. And so, you know, that's, that's a, that's a pretty sobering thought. And I promise you that by the end of my presentation, it'll be a little more optimistic and hopeful. But we certainly have to acknowledge that starting out. Okay. I probably pushed the wrong button here to get us started. Denise, do I just go right? Correct? Maybe you're gonna have to. I'm sorry. I accidentally pushed the red button at the top. Did that do something? Okay. Thanks, Sandy. Oh. Well, I'm gonna go ahead and... There we go. One back. Should I, I'll try it now and see. There we go. Perfect. Thank you. Thanks, Sandy. So this is the slide that I show you every time I come and give you an update. This is two weeks' worth of data. This is on our COVID dashboard on the Web Cities website. And you can see that we are seeing some real stability in, for sure, the last couple of weeks. We're seeing active cases, new daily cases slowly trending down. Our average, three-day average of new cases is very stable and trending in a downward direction. And hospitalizations have been really flat over the last couple of weeks and making some good progress in a downward trajectory. The health systems right now are really in a very, they're really in a stable pattern right now. They're, you know, they've been sharing with us that they're almost trying to live within this new normal because they are slowly getting themselves back into somewhat of what normal operations might look like while at the same time being ready for any increase in cases and hospitalizations that may come their way. So this then gives you kind of a more six-month snapshot because I think this is a pretty impressive one that can kind of share with you, you know, where we were six months ago, which is very similar to where we are today. And so I think this is an important one for us to remember. And in addition to the four-square here and what you see, which I'm not going to go into a great detail on, you got reports on a weekly basis on this throughout this time period of where we were. I think for the community at large, though, it's good for them to see where we were in Minnehaw in Lincoln County. In addition to this, we also follow positivity rates, you know, and that's the number of positive cases against all cases for a given day. And that gives us a positivity rate. In January, well, November through January, we were seeing positivity rates around 30% to 50% in that range, which isn't where you want to be. You want to be less than 5%. But luckily, really, that has been decreasing nicely in February, and we're actually seeing that consistently under 20% now, and in some cases, you know, even much less than 20%. So we're starting to see some improvement in that area as well. So this is a really nice map to be able to sort of visually get a quick snapshot and perspective on a per capita basis. How do we in Minnehaw and Lincoln County compare for new daily cases per capita compared to some other counties around in South Dakota? And so the size of the dot is just representative of, you know, the bigger the dot, the more per capita cases you have, new daily cases in your county. And you can see now that we really are kind of in that middle range between Minnehaw and Lincoln County. When you look at the larger dots in some other counties, as well as smaller dots in some, that wouldn't have been the case months ago where we would have, you know, in the early months of the pandemic, we would have been certainly garnering the majority of the cases that were in our state. But that's definitely leveled out and become much more spread out throughout the counties in South Dakota. So this slide, you know, there's been a lot in the news lately around variants that, you know, we're starting to see, and there's three predominantly that we know of and that are present in the United States. Luckily, none of these variants have been identified in South Dakota or reported in South Dakota as of yet. The B.1.1.7, or I will say, just for your reference, the UK variant, is the one that's most predominant. There's actually over, around, over 1,600 in the US cases that they're aware of, of that particular variant. But there aren't any, again, identified in South Dakota as of yet. The other two variants, there's very, very few that were identified yet in the United States. So we're not seeing much of those at all yet. I think the one thing to note, though, is that, I don't know if it was a week or two ago, probably two weeks ago, Dr. Josh Clayton at the South Dakota Department of Health did say that by March, the UK variant will be likely the predominant variant in the state of South Dakota. So there's, they're expecting a lot more of that to be entering in. And you can see on this map, it's quite, quite around us, but just not in our state yet. So this is giving us a snapshot, or a pictorial, and a map of vaccination success, or where we're at in vaccinating across the United States. This data is percentage-based, and it identifies just, kind of gives us a way to measure ourselves and our state against other states as far as how successful we are in getting vaccinations delivered to people. So where we sit as a state is we're at 26 doses per 100 people have been given in South Dakota, which actually ranks us in the top three. We're number three. I think it's next to, I think New Mexico and Alaska might be one and two, not necessarily respectively, but in the one and two spot, and then South Dakota's next. But that changes every week. But we have been really garnering right in that top 10 category for our success in getting vaccinations to people in South Dakota. And you've probably seen some of the reporting on that, that we've been really successful as a state. And I give a lot of credit to our health systems and our State Department of Health for the work they've been doing to make sure we're getting shots in arms. When you look at statewide, we're at 18% of our state's population receiving their first dose of vaccine, and a little over 9% have completed their series. We're very similar to that. And based on the South Dakota's data, in Sioux Falls specifically, 7% of our population in Minnehaw and Lincoln Counties have received their first dose, and 9% of the population having completed their vaccination series for about 16%. So this is information you can glean on the State Department of Health website as well. This is what we're, every week or so, they're updating this, or every time they're going further down into Group D, they're updating this to let folks know where we're at and make sure people understand if they're eligible to be vaccinated. This week, they moved vaccinations down into that age category of 65 and over. And so all groups A, B, C are still eligible for a vaccine, but then all people 65 and older are eligible for a vaccine, as well as people who are high-risk patients. You can see that list here, as well as people who are high-risk in congregate settings. Those are also being vaccinated at this time. You can see off to the right, it's kind of a chart that is meant to give people an idea of when we might be moving to the next groups. And so you can see that sometime in March, hopefully the beginning of March, people with two or more underlying medical conditions will be eligible to receive vaccine. Teachers and funeral service workers will also become eligible. Hopefully, that will happen sooner, you know, in March, or maybe, you know, they've been doing a really great job. As they see that that is needing to be adjusted, they're then adjusting this chart accordingly. And so then notably, the rest of our fire personnel that haven't already been vaccinated in our community, as well as all our critical infrastructure, will be the next group then in Phase E. And we identify that that, or the state has identified that that'll happen sometime mid-April, that those folks will be able to be vaccinated. There's a number of entities that are providing vaccinations in our community, and you probably know most of them. You know the work that Sanford-Nevera during. You know that the pharmacy, certain retail pharmacies are also providing vaccinations now. Urban Indian Health is also receiving a direct allocation from the feds to provide vaccinations. And then the VA is also providing vaccinations. The National Guard is vaccinating their, their employees and their folks in the Guard. And then we, as a Sioux Falls Health Department, are partnering with the health systems to vaccinate certain populations as well. For example, Sandy and Katie Wick have been leading up the effort to vaccinate people that are in congregate, high-risk congregate settings. So like folks that frequent the Bishop Dudley Hospitality House, or the St. Francis House, Union Gospel Mission, places of that nature. There's at least a half a dozen that we're partnering with to help get vaccine into the arms of people that frequent those establishments or stay in those, in those facilities. Notably, what's not on this list, which actually it is, it's Phase II, all others 16 years and older. That will be the next phase that will come into play. But then also, the federal government did say just last week that they estimate that 12- to 17-year-olds will start being eligible in the fall for vaccinations. You know, they're doing trials right now to understand the safety and efficacy of those who are younger than 17 or 16, depending on which mRNA vaccine that you get. And then also, by first quarter of 2022, they're estimating that elementary-age kids will be, starting to be vaccinated, just to give you a little information there. So next, you probably want a little bit of information about where we're at with our community education campaign. And, you know, currently, the populations that we've been working with or that have been eligible to be vaccinated have been really highly motivated to be vaccinated. They've been waiting, they've been waiting, and they're ready. And so when they get the call, or the email, or the text, they're getting signed up and they're getting vaccinated. So this campaign is really going to be geared more towards folks that we're going to see emerging and becoming eligible, you know, into March. There may be more folks that have a little bit of vaccine hesitancy, need more information, need to be, you know, provided sort of that, you know, ability to hear more frequently in fact-based information about why it's important to be vaccinated. And so this promotion, this educational campaign is really intended to do that. And so you'll see things starting to roll out. They're working on, as a matter of fact, I think they were just in a meeting right before this. I heard Brianne and Sandy talking on a WebEx in the office next to mine, so I'm quite sure that's what they were working on. And then in March, you're going to start seeing the landing page with new artwork. You're going to see the launch of digital billboards, social media, et cetera, and other means of getting information out, working with fresh produce for the creative and other aspects of that campaign. And then we'll continue to have conversations with our stakeholders to make sure that we are continuing to stay in step with our health systems and the work and information they're putting out there and help support the efforts and vice versa. So again, Brianne Becker-Kenect from the Mayor's Office is leading up that effort, and she's here as well as Sandy to be able to provide any additional information that you may need or questions that I can't answer on that particular aspect or anything else I've talked to up to this point. So this is a little bit of the good news that I'll share of where we're at. This, you know, every year, we monitor closely influenza activity in our community and work with our partners to make sure we're mitigating the spread of that virus as well. So this graph is what's sent out every week. We get an update on where we're at. It's been pretty boring because it's been a sporadic spread with very few cases across the state in the many, many weeks up to this point. That arrow gives you a sense of where we're at this week, based on what we got received for information last week. The very dark green spike that you see, the highest one, is where we were last year at this time for cases of influenza in our community. Every year, it's kind of different. We might have a lot of cases, but we may not have a lot of hospitalization deaths. Or we may not have, you know, a lot of cases, but we have vice versa. It's a very, you know, a very lethal or deadly, you know, influenza virus, or really affecting elderly and others in a way that maybe it didn't the season prior. And so that's why we really push so hard for flu shots. That's why we push so hard for all vaccinations, to be able to make sure we're keeping people safe and, and having as little impact from the viruses that are circulating as possible. But I think we can attribute the mitigation efforts very much. What we're seeing here, as well as in other states and across the country, as far as their low rates of influenza is a direct correlation to the mitigation efforts. The things we talk about every year to try and prevent the spread of influenza is what we're working so hard on with additional mitigation to prevent COVID, is having a side benefit of also preventing influenza from spreading across our community. So I think that kind of covers what I was going to share with you today. I welcome any questions that you may have or anything that Sandy or Brianne can answer for you.
Thank you. Questions? Counselor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Say, Director Franken, I have a question on, when we were back at our peak, you know, kind of in that November-ish timeframe, and we were, you know, here talking for long hours, do you know what our hospitalization rate would have been? Like, right now, we, we seem to be like where we were right coming out of summer in that September 1 timeframe, and then we started, you know, going up. And now we're back to that same place where we were probably when we were starting to talk about, you know, the mask mandate the first time. Do you know where we were for hospitalizations?
Well, yeah. Actually, we were sitting at, I think, when we, because it was in, beginning to late, you can see the numbers here on this map. It's a little bit difficult to see, but we were in the 200s, upper 190s to low 200s around mid-November. And that's when you really started some serious discussions, because I think it took effect then early December. And so that's, we would have peaked right about that first, second week of November. Probably a little later than that, based on that. Sandy, does that sound about right? About mid-November.
Thanks. Sorry, my eyes are not as good as they once were.
It's okay.
Mr. Chair, if I may, so of those 24 that are hospitalized right now, are those all in the ICU, or they'd just be general COVID patients in hospitals?
Right. I think that they're probably still a mix because, you know, they're, they would be both ICU and non-ICU. As well as, that would include people who, you know, have been there long enough because they've had, they've been very, very ill and maybe are no longer needing to isolate because they've now tested negative, but did come to the hospital suffering from COVID, and that was what brought them in for an admission. So some of those might be in there as well.
Mr. Chair, say, yesterday, and I know this has happened before, there were zero cases. I thought, you know, we'd be out screaming that from the, you know, the headlines of every newspaper that, you know, is still in business. You know, what, tell me about that and what actually happened there?
Well, we typically see on Monday a lag because of the testing that it might have not happened, you know, happened or didn't happen over the weekend. Even when we were seeing really high rates reported throughout the rest of the week, usually Monday and Tuesday was a lower reporting. It'd be really low on Monday, and then it might spike up starting Tuesday, then into Wednesday. But that's very typical. And we put out a report, I want to say, oh, let's see, I've got it right here. I don't have the one from yesterday, but I want to say we had like 70 cases for the last three days in Sioux Falls. Does that sound right, Sandy? That was for Minnehaha County, I want to say. Do you remember?
Yeah, I think it's actually just a wee bit higher.
I'm going to have Sandy come up.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Sorry. Thank you. Sandy France, Public Health Manager. So I don't really, don't remember the exact number, but I think one of the things you have to really take into consideration when you look at yesterday's numbers is the incredible low number of testing that was done, not only in our MSA, but across the state, which is why I think we saw those lower numbers. Because if you, I sent out an update that, to leadership that included the numbers for a three-day weekend, so what was reported out on Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. And, and they were really back up to what we were typically seeing on a day-to-day basis. But when you add it together, those three days, what we saw for total number of testing in those three days was really similar to what we were seeing in a single day as we were, you know, back in, in December. So we're just seeing a little bit lower numbers in testing, in addition to the fact that Mondays do tend to be a considerably lower volume.
Mr. Chair, follow-up on that one?
Yes, please.
So we're having lower testing numbers. Would it be reasonable to say that less people are getting COVID? So that's why we're having lower testing numbers? Or help me unpack that a little?
So I, I don't know that I would make, automatically move to that correlation. It could be, I mean, one of the things we do know is that within South Dakota, the majority of the testing is still being done on symptomatic people. So our asymptomatic people are not getting tested, right? Because if you don't have symptoms, you're not going in. And I firmly believe that there's a portion of the population that has the signs and symptoms of COVID, may have been exposed, and have just chosen to not go in and be tested. So I, I don't think you can make that correlation.
Okay, yeah, just trying to figure out, trying to figure out why there's, you know, less testing going on. If I can just keep going for a little bit here. With 16% of the state vaccinated, I think maybe that was a number, there's a lot of numbers that came out, but 16% of the state is vaccinated. What percentage of the population has already had COVID? So like, between vaccinations and people that have already had COVID, tell me, can you break that down for me?
I can probably maybe try and do something to break that down, but that's definitely the question that we continue to have. The problem with that is not everybody goes in to be tested. So I, the number I would give you would be simply the number of people that have been tested positive. But there are so many people that never go in to get tested. They, their spouse was positive, and then they started getting sick with the exact same symptoms, but they were like, I don't know why I would go in and get tested. I know I need to isolate. I need to get over this. And so that's, I really don't have a number for you, and I don't know that the state has been sharing any kind of a number on that either.
Okay. On that, so if I wasn't tested, and I went in and got my blood drawn at my annual physical, and I have the antibodies, is that then a positive test? Or is that, is that included in our numbers?
That, no. The only number that's included would be the actual positive COVID test that you had done, not whether or not you had an antibody that was tested. Is that correct, Sandy?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
About one more, and then maybe I'll go around the horn, if that's okay?
That's fine.
Okay.
One of the other questions I was thinking about, well, now I've forgotten it.
Sorry, I broke your train of thought.
He is asking really good questions, so if I might.
Yeah, they're very good.
Well, come, go around the horn, man.
Okay. We'll, we'll get back to you. Next, who'd like, anybody else have? Counselor Sale, and then we'll go to Counselor Char.
Just one quick question. When it, when it comes to herd immunity, what percentage are we looking for when it comes to, because they would have to be vaccinated people to be calculated for herd immunity?
What they're aiming for is right around that 75% to 80% of the population becoming vaccinated before we feel like we are at a place where herd immunity has been achieved across the country.
Thank you.
Counselor Star.
Yes. Thank you, Director, for updating us. This has been informative. One of the questions that I had were our minority populations in Sioux Falls. One of the things that, going back to the, the health report, the Community Health Assessment Report that we did, we talked about life expectancies being different in different parts of town. So I'm really interested in maybe the, how are we approaching minority members of the community, people who speak Spanish, or Burmese, or Swahili being the, the top languages, and how do we do those? I saw a news report this morning that kind of fits in with that. They were talking about the disparity that the minorities have a much higher rate and are affected, also at a much higher rate. They were talking about African-Americans in a large city, and they were saying that, you know, just going to inoculate people or vaccinate people who are over 75, well, the life expectancy of the minority communities that are at the most risk don't have a life expectancy of 75. So how are we addressing those most at risk that maybe have some communication issues and putting that forward?
Well, I will let Brianne answer some of this, but we are absolutely working with our partners to identify opportunities, to engage with the Multicultural Center, with Lutheran Social Services, et cetera. I know that that's part of the strategy with the campaign as well. And so I did invite Brianne to come up, but we also are working with them on just really making sure we're getting, you know, vaccines into arms as well as quickly as possible. But equity is absolutely one of the hallmarks of what we're trying to achieve, not just here, but across the country, to make sure that we are reaching all populations. So.
I can address that. So I've had some good conversations with the Multicultural Center, and actually just on Friday, talked with Lutheran Social Services. So we are having those conversations. In my discussion with the Multicultural Center, I connected them with Averian Sanford, knowing that really the two hospitals are, are driving messaging right now. So they were able to help Christie create a, or Christie created a one-page document that then they have translated and been sharing with, with communities. Had a really good conversation on Friday with, like I said, with Lutheran Social Services and Rebecca Kiso-Knutzen, I think I'm getting her name correct, in the Center for New Americans, just in talking with the challenges that they're seeing and reaching and communicating with some of those diverse populations. So we have been talking with them, have some ideas around developing a toolkit. So once we get our messaging established, really sharing that with Lutheran Social Services, Multicultural Center, for them to then share with their communities. The other conversations that we had were around engaging leaders within those diverse communities, knowing that, you know, if someone that you know can speak up and say, yes, the vaccine is safe, I've had it, you know, that really goes a long way. So we've definitely been having those conversations. In terms of translation, what we've, what we've started looking at is using the top four languages that are spoken in the Sioux Falls School District and translating materials with those languages. So with our billboards, we're planning to start with having English and Spanish. So we're working through, working through those questions. And I think, again, it will be working collaboratively with Averian Sanford and making sure that our messages are on point with what they're sharing, and then also with what the state's sharing. So just knowing that we're one piece of kind of this, this matrix of, of messaging and sharing those messages appropriately.
Thank you. Counselor Kylie?
Thank you. I just had a, Director Franken, I just had a follow-up question to Counselor Sale's question about herd immunity. And we often do here, we need to get at least up to 70% of the population vaccinated to hope to reach herd immunity. Do they factor individuals who have had, in this case, COVID-19, in that percentage?
Well, no, it's the vac, it's the number of people vaccinated. And so what we still, what we know is that people have some level of immune response after they have had COVID. But certainly, that is not something that we well understand as far as how long someone's has immunity. And the other issue is the immunity does not apply necessarily from a natural infection to these variants. Whereas we're seeing that the variants that are now, you know, becoming more prevalent in our, in our country and are starting, especially the B.1.1.7 variant is highly, you know, the, the vaccines that we have out there now are working very well against. are working very well against that one. But doesn't necessarily mean I'm not, with natural COVID infection, not going to get that B117. And it is, you know, something that we have to really think about. So I, that's the concern I have right now, are two things, getting more people vaccinated and reducing hesitancy in that space, and then also really monitoring the variants and making sure that we're protecting people. Especially when I hear from Josh Clayton that by March, we should have that being the predominant virus variant in our state. That's, or the predominant virus, I should say, that variant will be. That concerns me, and so I really, you know, I hope that isn't the case, but I trust his judgment. He's been doing a good job giving us good information up to this point. And so those are the reasons I'm still concerned, and I think our mitigation efforts still have to be judiciously applied for at least a little bit longer, so.
Well, the unfortunate reality is that, is that COVID is a virus. Viruses by nature mutate. They need to in order to survive, because they cannot survive without a host cell, since they don't have the mechanisms to reproduce on their own. So the challenge is going to be to stay ahead of all the mutations, develop vaccines that are going to be effective against vaccines. That's why I believe it's been stated that we're going to have follow-up, most likely have follow-up boosters, and tweaking of the vaccine, as they do with the seasonal influenza. And also the fact that because we've been vaccinated, there's still that possibility that we can transmit the disease to those who have not been, because basically, this vaccine doesn't necessarily destroy the virus, but it just simply impairs its ability to attach itself to those host cells. So it's still alive and well to infect others. So there's still a lot to learn as we go. We're really in, in the infancy of this particular disease, and a lot of challenges ahead of us yet.
Well put, Counselor. Thank you.
Counselor Erickson?
Thank you. Remind me, Jill, which vaccines have been approved so far? We only have two. Is that correct?
Yep, the Pfizer vaccine, Moderna.
Johnson and Johnson is.
Johnson and Johnson this week.
Is coming, is coming. You know, there, there'll be regarding that application this week. And so hopefully by early March, we'll see that vaccine, that vaccine become available. Because that will, that will increase vaccinations for those that are wanting to get it, should we have three on the table, so to speak, now.
There's, there's a lot of progress being made, not only to get that vaccine circulating. I think there's like 2 million doses, they've said, that can be, you know, out circulating in March. But also then ramping up vaccine in general across the country. There's things they're doing, Pfizer and Moderna are doing, to try and really maximize and optimize their production. So, you know, hopefully, you know, by late spring, we'll be really seeing, you know, a lot of vaccine available.
Right. Thank you. The other question I had is, when Counselor Jensen was asking his question about the number of people being tested, et cetera, do we have an idea of how many unique individuals were tested versus how many tests were done? For example, I've, I've been tested two times. One time was positive, one time was not. My son has been tested five times, all times negative, because he had surgery and all the reasons why that were required, from exposure and travel and whatever. But then I have my one son that was tested one and done. So I'm just curious as far as if we know, like, in South Dakota, we've done, I don't even want to use a number, but you know what I mean, if, if we know number of, of tests versus, and really, this is just for just nerdy information.
I'll, I'll get you the exact, you know, Sandy, do you have any better? Yep. That's something that, between whether or not it's total tests versus people tested, and I think Sandy can answer that.
Yeah, I've kind of got a soft answer for you, more than anything. So the state does some work with de-identifying. So if you look in their dashboard, they do have total persons tested versus total confirmed cases. So they could drill that down more into, you know, total persons tested and total negative cases too, but, you know, we, we can tell you based on their dashboard, but not much lower than that.
Okay. I just was curious about that, with, with that. My other question is in regards to all the changes with the CDC. I feel like we're getting CDC recommendations as a nation, not, not just specifically for South Dakota, but obviously as a nation as a whole, that change quite frequently. How does that impact our mitigation efforts and what we do as a city when new CDC recommendations come out?
Well, so, you know, really, the, the general mitigation hasn't changed dramatically. I know that there is some question about whether or not two masks, you know, double masking is beneficial, but really, those general mitigation efforts haven't changed, and I think those are, those continue to be the recommendations that we then push out. As far as, I don't know if you want to talk specifically about something that you think has been changing frequently?
Well, exposures versus, I mean, mask-to-mask exposure versus non-mask exposure, versus 10-day versus 14-day, if you need to isolate, if you don't isolate. I mean, it's, it's very confusing for a lot of.
Well, I think that's why, you know, it's incumbent upon all of us to check that CDC website frequently, because we are, and I, this is a very tired analogy, I know, but it's, we are truly flying, you know, we're building the plane while we're flying it.
Yeah.
And, and so when you have anything that's novel, and has never been experienced before, you are truly just learning as you go. And so, you know, I, I think that's why you're seeing things change. The more they learn, the more science they can actually support behind it and evidence, then they're making those changes to those recommendations.
And I appreciate that. And not a loaded question at all, just really, just, you know, one time my son's exposed, and I have to do this, and then the rules change, and then, then add out-of-country travel, and there's a whole nother set of regulations that go along with that for those folks that choose to do that. So it's just been, it's just been interesting times, that's for sure.
Sure.
So, thank you.
Yep.
Others, including those who forgot a question and want to ask it now?
Or interrupted.
Mr. Chair?
Counselor Jensen?
Or interrupted.
Sorry.
And they're really important questions, so I thought I just had the floor, so I thought it'd make sense to continue on. But, okay. So, like, when you get to, one, the teachers and the school and the college staff and such are starting to get called in to get their vaccines, right? Or my charted, or whatever the, the way is. How do you know those people are teachers? And how do you know we're reaching out to them so we accelerate this thing, you know, to get into that next phase to the second, you know, to the second phase?
Sure, sure. Well, right now, it's been pretty, you know, it's been, I don't want to say easy, because it's been a heavy, heavy lift for, you know, those that have been doing vaccinations thus far. But I would say, most people that have been getting vaccinations thus far have been someone who lives in a nursing home, or they are identified through the congregate setting, that they, you know, frequent the Union Gospel Mission, or Bishop Dudley Hospitality House, or we, it's someone who's a patient of ours at our clinic, or a patient of Sanford or Avera, or it's, you know, so that's been pretty, pretty easy to do. When you get now to teachers, you know, that'll be that next level. But a lot of those individuals will likely still be vaccinated through their healthcare provider. So they'll probably still likely be vaccinated through Sanford, or through Avera, for example. And then, you know, we'll assist in whatever way we can to help support that as well. But, you know, I think we're, they've got a really solid process going on right now, where they do their very best to identify people, because also, at some point, we're going to, they're going to start being able to submit for insurance reimbursement. And so all of those things start becoming clear. They, you know, they're with the Sioux Falls School District, or the Harrisburg School District, et cetera, from a teacher perspective. So it's, it's not a perfect, there's not going to be a perfect system, but certainly the best that, that can be done right now.
And the biggest holdup, I'm just going through all of these right away, is just simply supply of the vaccine? Would that be true?
Supply of the vaccine, and, and the supplies to administer the vaccine. So as long as we can keep the pipeline of vaccine and supplies, we're doing about, I think it's, and this doesn't count those entities that aren't required to submit to the South Dakota Immunization website, but we're doing almost 10,000 a week of vaccinations here. And so around 9,500 last seven days were completed. But that doesn't count the additional vaccinations. So making some good progress, and, and more will be coming online. But it's also really given, I think it has just been, I've got to hand it to the process that has been done in our state, and especially in our community. We have had so many people, you know, send compliments about how it went for them to get vaccinated. It was so easy, so slick. I think it's going to change the expectations of how people get their healthcare, because they, they're so shocked to be able to go in and out so quickly. And, and so I think that this is something that we should be really, you know, feel really good about in our community.
May I just add a quick question, because it relates to that? Would it be true, too, that especially in these upper age brackets, that mobility was an issue for these individuals, which helped, that it actually kind of slowed down that process?
Yes, absolutely. And just being able to navigate things like, you know, my chart, you know, if you're 85 years old and living independently, and you just never really got connected up with your healthcare provider that way, you know, that's something that, and, and just filling out the forms and things of that nature. Goodness, I'm going to need some help filling out some of these types of forms when I get to be in my advanced years as well. So things like that are, are what really made it take a little bit longer for the appointment, if you will. But certainly, you know, everybody worked hard through that. Now, in other communities across the state, that has been a real barrier for people to have to drive quite a few miles to be able to get their vaccination. And when we think of equity, that's what we're, and so Horizon Healthcare is actually a sister community health center to us at Falls Community Health, and they've been tapped to be receiving direct allocation of vaccine from the feds. There's about 250 health centers that were identified across the country that could help with some of that equity issue, and they're going to get direct allocation to help with some of that in some of their very frontier areas.
Mr. Chair?
Let's go to Counselor Brecky, and then we'll go to Selberg.
Not a question, just a statement. I did receive my shot today at 11 o'clock, and I, I did want to put an exclamation point behind what Director Franken just said. It was amazing, and I made sure to compliment everyone that I came in contact with. It's just amazing how efficiently they are moving people through the process, and how effectively they're, you know, giving information, scheduling the second shot. I mean, it's just a point of pride that we have these two medical facilities in our community that show such leadership at times like this. And it's, we just need to be very, I, I am very grateful. And I just wanted to make sure and tell everyone that, because it was, it was, I kind of expected it. I, I know, no doctor, or Director Franken has been saying that, you know, she's been impressed with how they've spun into action on this. And, you know, I just wanted to ditto what she said. They really have, and I, I'm not surprised. They, they've done those kinds of things for this community in the past, and they're doing them now. And we have a, you know, we should be very grateful, and, and we're just very fortunate.
Thank you, Counselor Brecky. Counselor Selberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is just about side effects so far. You hear, once in a while, I hear an occasional story, somebody will go, oh, I'm on my second shot, and felt like I had the flu for a day, and, but is it, is there a lot of that going on? Or is it very limited? Or what are some stories that you hear?
Well, sure. So I felt pretty crappy after I got my first and second. I had a fever, I had body aches, et cetera. I consider that, I feel lucky, because I know my body was responding to the vaccine appropriately, and I was getting a really good immune response. And, and my body was building up that immunity. And so I didn't take it, I took it as validation that it was doing the job that it was doing, you know, that needed to do. And so, yes, that's, that's a natural immune response, but very few beyond that. And we're not aware of really much of any, you know, issues with people having an adverse reaction, where they have, you know, an allergic reaction, if you will. But they're all prepared to, with epinephrine and et cetera, EpiPens and that, you know, located at the vaccination clinics, to be able to manage those appropriately, should they need to.
That's terrific. Thank you.
Counselor Kylie?
As long as it's been discussed, I will, I will state that I had my first vaccination yesterday. They moved my age category relatively quickly. I mean, it was just 70 the Monday before, and now it's 65 this particular week. But it, it took, from the time I left my home, and then re-entered my home, it was less than one hour. So over half of that was just drive time. So it was very efficient. And I was told that they weren't, they weren't giving vaccinations on Friday. I didn't ask about Thursday, and this was through Avera. But I would imagine that's due to a lack of enough vaccine to do this seven, seven days a week. That'd be my guess. I'm making an assumption. But I, I also was told that they're doing up to 900 vaccinations per day at that particular site. So they really had it down, down pat. My symptoms following, I, I will disclose, I had just a sore arm. And, and that wasn't until late at night, just before I went to bed. I woke up this morning with a little sore arm. By noon, completely gone. And the sore arm wasn't any different than when, as a kid, my big brother would slug me in the arm, sore arm type. So it wasn't terrible. It's, seems to vary from person to person. So I think there's definitely a genetic connection there, as to how you react.
I have a theory that men are faring much better than women. I have talked to very few men who've had a really bad react, you know, like a, a really strong immune response. But I've talked to a lot of women who've had a really strong immune response as a result. So I think there's, I, I feel like there's something there between how men react versus women. And the issue on the Friday is a lot due to logistics, making sure that they don't end up with extra vaccine doses in a bottle, and not have the ability to, you know, get someone on board to vaccinate them, part of it. And then just logistically of, you know, getting, how they, how they schedule their clinics as well.
Others. Counselor Jensen, please.
Thank you for your indulgence, Mr. Chair. Say, I have a, with the metrics that you keep, and the state keeps, and, you know, we're getting better at that, and so on, with the people that have had COVID multiple times, as a percent of people that have had COVID before, what, do you have a number on that?
I don't. I don't know that that number has really been, it's not been publicly communicated. So I have a feeling they, that the state epidemiologist probably has an awareness of that, because I'm assuming they have to report that to the CDC. But I don't have that, I don't know that number, but I think it's, it's, it's lower. It's not on the higher, just because of the amount of time and, you know, the, the information we're continuing to learn about COVID, and have, and being re-infected with COVID. You know, they've been saying 90 days is probably something that you can sort of consider would be a reliable timeframe, that you might be, have an immune response by natural infection. But they're also, you know, continuing to monitor that, to see if that actually is longer than that. But that's what I, that's, you know, the best information we have right now.
Mr. Chair, thank you for this luxury. Say, with the new vaccines and, you know, all the cases that, let's just take for an example, a nursing home, you know, that, that was one of the places that got hit really hard the fastest, and they're, you know, have we seen any improvement in nursing homes since vaccines have happened? And the, the, I think the term you were looking at is percent positive, percent positive. That's one of the key statistics you watch. Have we seen that decline in the nursing home world, and as well as, like, any of these places that have already gotten vaccines?
Well, certainly, since, you know, folks in the nursing home have been vaccinated, that certainly, and they're still using good infection control mitigation efforts in nursing homes. The one thing that I'm hearing now is that some of the nursing homes are able to, you know, add an additional to, you know, add an additional visitor, maybe. They're able to have, you know, more visitation, more social interaction of the patients than they were in the past. But certainly, you know, it's starting to look much brighter for the nursing home populations in terms of how they're managing not just, not just COVID, but other, you know, viral infections as well, and keeping people healthy.
Please, continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With regards to teachers, and they're almost about ready to, to get the call to, to come in, and maybe the school district has better numbers on this, but I, how many teachers or our education system, because we've stayed open, which is great, but as a percent of our student population and our teachers, how are they faring in, in this, you know, COVID world?
I'm gonna have Sandy come up and see if she wants to try and give you some information on that. She's been working really closely with the school districts.
Thank you for that.
So I don't have exact numbers. I would have to refer you to the districts, but the school districts in this area did participate in Sentinel testing as well. Not, I don't know that Sioux Falls Public did. I, I should give you that caveat, but there are a number of schools that did participate in Sentinel testing, so they just randomly brought staff in and did testing, just like the nursing homes were doing, to monitor how their staff was doing. And, and, you know, they managed through their staffing to be able to keep their, their programs open. At the Health Department, we have done some support of testing for critical infrastructure for teachers through the Sioux Falls Public School System, and we've seen a dramatic drop off just tests with their own employees and the number of tests and the number of positives. So, you know, we're seeing that that population is, is responding and, and being impacted in the same level as the community is.
Follow up to that question, if I may?
Yes, please.
Thank you. And then in the schools, they have a recommendation, a strong recommendation on masking up. It, it's not mandated within the schools. Is that accurate?
It depends upon the school district.
In Sioux Falls, sorry?
So the public school district is recommended. There are private districts within Sioux Falls that mandated.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Uh, yes, Counselor Starr.
Thank you. So I guess that's my, to follow up a little bit, Sandy, with what you were saying. So have we kind of, hate, I don't want to use given up, but are we not contact, contact tracing then anymore as, as part of this, that we've totally shifted, that we don't think that it's?
Oh, no, the state is still doing contact tracing.
Okay.
They, they've still got their expanded staff, you know, at one time, because just the sheer volume of numbers. They did bring in an expanded staff by activating guard, and the National Guard is still activated and assisting.
Yeah, because it's, it, I've watched with my kids, because we do this anecdotally in our own experiences as, as we do that. I get the, the once or twice a week email that says, your child's been in contact with someone, but the state possibly will get back to you in the future, but you need to know now, and they're behind. Are they catching up with being able to, to do a good job of getting ahead of an outbreak like you would with an epidemic?
So I guess, I don't have any specific statistics on, on where they are. I can speak anecdotally on behalf of my husband, who tested positive and was contacted by the state several days later.
Awesome. The one other direction that I, I kind of wanted to follow up a little bit on, as, as we've been talking about it, we've talked about ourselves and our families, and, and that's great. Let's throw out that, back to the, the analogy from the community health report that we did just a couple of years ago. Let's say you're 70, you don't have a healthcare provider. I mean, how does that person get in? Because we have MyChart, and that's been really great for us. I know the Avera equivalent has, has worked really well. But how are we reaching, like I said, that person who's in their 70s that, you know, doesn't have a regular healthcare provider that they normally do? They certainly have limited English proficiencies. I mean, how, how are we going after them? And what I'm hearing is, is that we're running out, you know, we're getting enough people to come and use up all the vaccine that we have to this point. So that equality part of it, how does that, say?
I mean, there's multiple platforms. So people that, for example, maybe are not connected to a healthcare provider, but because of just conversations, know that vaccine is available, are able to go through either of the healthcare systems to receive their vaccination. If they're connected to the VA Medical Center, the VA has a program, they're receiving federal allocations. We do have a vaccine tab now on the sioufals.org COVID page, if you go to the more information side instead of the dashboard side. That came up live last week, that has information to help connect people not only to the healthcare systems in the VA, but also to that, that federal retail pharmacy program. So, and I, I mean, the retail pharmacies that have received vaccine within our community are also advertising that, that they have vaccines available and do scheduling. So, I mean, you know, there's multiple platforms, and then, of course, there are programs already in place through social media. We have done some work with it, but the State Department of Health has, has done a lot of work with sharing infographics and doing social media outreach campaigns to make sure that people have information.
Just not hearing that person get hit in any one of those. I think that it would be difficult, again, for that typical group of people who are outside of that. And so, I mean, I don't see the social media at 70 years old. I don't see the, you know, maybe the retail pharmacy, but some of the other, and not trying to be critical, but just in the, the overall picture of, you know, until we get to that point of having enough vaccine that we're looking for people, I, I don't think we're talking to that group.
Well, I do think there is some family advocacy too, but I'll...
Yeah, that would, I mean, that, that totally makes sense.
So we've had, Falls Community Health has had a partnership with Lutheran Social Services for a long time, and we actually have a contract where we receive federal grants. You know, the, certainly the rates of new arrivals has dropped off tremendously in the last couple, three years. But we are the first point of arrival for all newly arriving refugees that come into our community. And, and we have about a 95% plus rate of, I think that's around what we've seen in the past of the number of refugees that actually do come through for all of their visits, their medical care. They get a, they get a screening, they get labs drawn, then they come for a physical, and then they come back for dental care follow-up after that. And so many, many refugees are plugged into us already. That also is why we're partnering with LSS and Multicultural Center to be able to ensure, and other pop, and other entities that serve diverse populations to make sure, and that's why Urban Indian Health is providing vaccinations, et cetera. And so it is helping to get the information to them about where to go, and that they are eligible now. I think once they get that information, that will help to continue to work on through our campaign, I think that they should be able to get vaccinated without any issue. So.
Perfect. And that's, that is the other thing in the, in the state with, working with Indian Health Services and Urban Indian Health. We've seen some, I, I saw an article yesterday that was talking about that Indian Health has really done a great job of, you know, I mean, they get beaten up pretty good, and there's a reason for that across the state and across the nation, but they've done really well with the vaccination program. And mostly because their rates are so high anyway, that it is, I think the, the folks in Indian country understand that that's how important it is, that they've seen even higher devastation of losing loved ones across the state than we have. So I, I think we're seeing those, and that part of it is good. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Counsel Kylie.
Follow up one thing. Want to make it clear, too, that even if your health provider is Avera, or your health provider is Sanford, you can go to either system for your vaccination. You're not restricted just to the one that you receive your medical services from. But I do, do believe that Counselor Starr raises a very valid point, getting in contact with those uninsured individuals. And I think that's where our community vaccination education campaign is gonna play a very important role. So, again, thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
I don't see anymore. So I have one comment and two questions. My first comment is, I've, I've expressed this to multiple school board members, and I need to mention this to the superintendent, that I'm gonna be forever grateful that we've kept schools open all year, because we're seeing the consequences of virtual learning, particularly with younger children. So with, with kids falling behind in other places. So I, I applaud them for what they've been able to do, to be able to pull this off. And I, I need to make sure, and I hope everybody expresses that appreciation. My two questions are, so I was walking through the grocery store a couple days ago, and they said over the speaker something like you could schedule an, an antibody test, and it was like a 15-minute thing. Based on what you've said to me, what benefit would I necessarily have from even knowing that I have the antibodies? Would I change my behavior in any way, or do anything different?
Well, that's a good question. And, and certainly, there's always a curiosity if somebody actually has had COVID or not, and if they have the antibodies. But no, you shouldn't be changing your behavior at this time, just because, because you don't know how long ago you contracted COVID, and you don't know how long that, those antibodies are gonna be effective. And so certainly, though, some people just really want to know. They might have been quite sick, but, you know, they tested negative for whatever reason, and, and so then they maybe have a curiosity and a wonder if that's actually what I had. And, and so certainly, and, and there may be some diagnostic benefit, you know, for someone to get an antibody test, for their provider to have that awareness. So.
Okay. But in the major things, in terms of mitigation and getting vaccinated, nothing changes?
Right.
Okay. And then my other question was, a while back here, during your, either Q&amp;A or your, I think maybe, you made a mention of 9,500 here, and that was in reference to the number of vaccinations?
Minnehaha and Lincoln County in the last seven days.
Okay, that was my question, was when you say here, that's the two county?
Yep.
That doesn't count the whole state. And then that was over, how long a time period?
Last seven days. If you go on our web, on the COVID dashboard, just scroll down and, and then click on the various tabs across, I think it's, it says county data or county something. And I can certainly show it to you or send it to you, Counselor Knightzert. But just, just tool around, you know, we've got a lot of information on that, on that dashboard and that, on that particular page. And so that would be where you could identify, find out by day how many we've done in Minnehaha County, how many in Lincoln County, for your information.
And then I don't think we've seen this here, but you've seen where in, in other states, for example, in, in New York, they, they stood up a number of kind of pop-up clinics, but the problem was they, they didn't have vaccine to give out. They, they, there just were people standing there and they didn't have it. Have we had any supply chain issues? Or we have anybody turning away, or we have, we've been really smooth, or how's that worked?
I think because most of the process, at least in Minnehaha and Lincoln County or in Sioux Falls, has been, you know, scheduling appointment for the, for the populations that need to come into a COVID, you know, clinic, or a vaccination clinic. I think that, that has mitigated some of that issue with people standing in line and, and then not having vaccine available at a certain point in the day. Appointment's getting booked out a little farther. For example, when my mom scheduled her vaccination, it was gonna be like four weeks before she was gonna be able, but then all of a sudden, the supply started increasing in the meantime, and so she got, was able to make an appointment sooner. And so it's those types of things where you might see a backlog within the appointment system, rather than actually, like, people standing in line. It's a virtual standing in line, but you're not having to, you know, be disappointed then if you don't get a vaccination. So.
Is the allocation that's being received staying reasonably steady, increasing?
Yeah, it's actually increasing, and, oh, Sandy just told me the amount. Yeah, the, next week, we'll be seeing about 17,000 doses. And it was just a few weeks ago, it was 13,000. And again, that doesn't count the direct federal allocations either. So we're starting to see a nice increase. So good news on the, on a number of fronts.
Okay, very good. Any other final questions while we have staff here? Nothing from Counselor Jensen, okay. No, it was like, yeah.
You get an A+ though today for asking good questions.
Yeah, great, great discussion. We didn't have a time limit, we didn't have any other meetings, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna cut anybody off. So, okay, thank you for coming. Thanks for all the time. With that, we will go to public comment. Anyone who wants to speak on any item for up to five minutes, now's your chance. Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.
Counselor Chair?
Counselor Chair?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. Counselor Breckie.
I'm sorry I was slow on the uptake when we started the meeting, but I did want to give you just a very brief summary of the Toot Hill House meeting that occurred yesterday. We are busy preparing for a, a community meeting, which will take place tomorrow at the, the Prairie Green Clubhouse. 600 postcards went out for public input, and we have a PowerPoint that we've been working on to share with the public and to get their input. And then we've been working on fine-tuning the presentation, which will soon after this meeting come to the city council. And I'm sorry that I didn't do this at the beginning of the meeting, but you were just too quick for me today. I was slow on the uptake. So I did want to let everybody know that, and you're all welcome to come if you want to, you know, have a preview. But a more detailed presentation is being prepared for the informational briefing when we update the council.
Okay, thank you. This should be a great meeting. Okay, with that, this meeting is adjourned.